Okay, we'll call the July 26th meeting, the Planning Commission order. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jess, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Cicero.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Perkovic.
Here.
Mr. Sedoti.
Here.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Here.
Mr. Varga.
Here.
Mr. Snow.
Here.
Entertaining motion for approval of the minutes of the July 5th meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Jess, when you're ready.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Abstain.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Abstain. Under all business, we have two items this evening, conditional use permit to allow vehicle leasing at 7430 Mennor Avenue by the Hertz Corporation. Is that applicant here?
Yes.
Would you come forward, please, and identify yourself for the clerk, please? Up to this podium over on this side.
Mr. Chairman.
Take it off the table.
Motion to remove item one from the table.
Is there a second?
Second.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. Go right ahead. Identify yourself for the clerk, if you would, please.
My name's Elliot Kiefsky. I'm with Cresco Real Estate, Cushman and Wakefield, broker for Hertz Corporation.
My name's Matthew Robson, area manager for the Hertz Corporation.
Mike Cipriani, property owner.
And give us a quick overview of what you'd like to do at that location.
We would like to move our existing facility into that location and rent cars.
It's that simple?
That's simple.
Any comments from the administration?
Mr. Chairman, I think at the last meeting, the concerns that were expressed by the commission involved the adequacy of parking spaces at the new site versus what they were currently using at the existing location on Center Street. We provided in the staff report a few different items. Hopefully, everyone's had a chance to review that with respect to the existing parking spaces on the overall site as it relates to not just that building, but all three buildings that are owned by Mr. Cipriani. One of the conditions that we had asked was that they combine the parcels for zoning compliance. And even with the consolidation and factoring in all of the available parking spaces for each use, there is adequate space available as proposed, you know, with this particular use and then the existing uses on the site. We also did an analysis of the parking that was permitted and currently exists for the Hertz facility on Center Street. And it was definitely under the amount that Mr. Sedoti had noted he saw out in the field. I think it was 42 spaces, or 42 cars, I'm sorry. And that parking lot does not even hold that much. So I don't know if it was a combination of two different lots that were factored in at the time of when he saw those cars. But that particular lot for the existing Hertz can't hold that capacity either, so.
Okay, thank you. Any comments back relative to parking concerns?
One of the scenarios that was addressed at the meeting last time, and unfortunately, the three of us were unable to make it, it was July 5th. So we had another gentleman.
You had an alternative?
Yes.
An alternate?
We had an alternate, exactly. And Matt came in so he could talk a little bit more about the business itself and how there is no customer parking overnight. They don't even allow overnight cars to be dropped by. And that this site does have adequate parking. If there was a scenario that required overflow parking, or if they were receiving more fleet vehicles, they would simply go to their other location down at the Jet Express Airport location in Richmond Heights Airport. So within a few minutes, there's adequate location. We've been able to secure something in relative proximity in Mennor to this location, but we prefer not to have to do it. And we would like to be able to state that the parking that is provided by Mr. Cipriani is adequate.
Commissioners, any questions for the applicant?
Yes, Chair, I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead, Mr. Cicero.
Matthew, can you just talk about the changeover of cars? How many cars are on the lot to rent? Customers that come to pick up cars? Explain how you're going to manage.
Yeah, so it seems like we should, you know, when you think of a rental car facility, you know, with 150 cars, like in their fleet, so to speak, right? You think we have a lot of cars, but really, we don't because there's constantly coming in and going back out. You know, if we have 15 or 20 customers in a day, we don't open up that day with 20 cars. We generally open up somewhere between eight or nine, and then user turns to come in and then send them back out, right? So generally, a Hertz facility, you know, we look to run into 90 to 92 percent utilization, which means we have 150 cars. You know, we generally have somewhere around 10 to 12 cars on-site at any given time, ready to rent. As Elliot sort of pointed out, we have overflow or additional facilities. One in Beachwood, it's Doubletree Hotel. We also have, we rent cars out of the Jet Center. So if we do get in a situation where we have unexpected returns, we just leave the cars there until we need them, and then we go pick them up and bring them back to the facility. And if we find where we just have too many cars through, you know, unexpected returns, we send them to another Hertz facility where they can actually be rented. Our cars are always in need somewhere. Each facility is in its, you know, own entity. We share cars from others, so if we need them, we bring them in. If we don't need them, we send them out. Also, as he alluded to, we no longer do overnight drop box at any of our facilities in the greater Cleveland area, which means customers can't just bring a car back in the middle of the night and drop it off. So we won't run into situations where there's just random cars parked where they shouldn't be parked. And then it's general Hertz policy that we don't allow customers to park their cars at our facility when they rent a car. So customers can't just drop their car there and then leave. So there'll always be spaces coming available throughout the course of a day.
So if you have 10 to 12 on-site, and one of these spaces up front is designated as handicap, so that's 10 of those 11 that are actually usable. You've got, I think we said, seven in the rear? So that's 18. What's your, when a customer's coming in to pick up a car, those folks have to park somewhere also. So where are they parking when they're coming in?
Yeah, so we have, you know, there are spots, you know, in the front that are designated for customer parking, so those are generally opens for customers to come in. But one thing to remember is when they come in to pick up a car, they leave with a car, right? So they drive their car in, one of those cars then is leaving, and the person that dropped them off is also leaving. We are, you know, the facility that they generally rent, you know, they're not one of the busier facilities that we have. I would say they're sort of like in the middle. We rarely will see more than two or three people in the lobby at any given time, you know, just because over the course of a 10-hour day, you know, if we're renting 15 cars in a day, it's generally pretty spread out. You get your little rush in the morning, your little rush at night when people go into work, coming home from work. But it's not like we have, you know, hordes of people, you know, coming at the same time to rent a car.
It just feels really tight for me. I can, I guess my fear with this plot for your business is, I understand what you're saying in a perfect scenario, but as things back up, it'll back up on the Mennor Avenue. And that now starts to create a real issue.
Right.
That's kind of my concern because it feels like it's so capped with space.
And I perfectly understand where you're coming from, like with the, you know, thinking of the parking spaces. But we typically, when we do any sort of conditional use or look to put a facility in somewhere, we typically don't ask for more than 20 spaces in general, anyway. Our facility on Center Street right now has roughly about the same amount of spaces, and we shared with Mobile One. So they would have their own customers. So we, you know, so it's roughly about the same, and it's hard for me to necessarily kind of just explain it for somebody that hasn't necessarily seen the give and take of how it works, but it does.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Varga.
Are you intending to have any kind of sharing relationship with the business next door to use some of their spaces as you do with the gas station? No? Is that part of your plan at all?
No, it's not part of what we're looking at to sort of use. They have their own business to run. It's not our intention to sort of infringe upon them. And, you know, even with, you know, currently with Mobile One, like they have their own spaces, we didn't use them. We sort of let them do their thing, and we did ours.
I guess the other concern that, another concern that I have is that you're depending on the use of these parking spaces in the rear, they're non-conforming to city standards. So my concern is that we approve this, we open the door for everybody down the road to start creating non-conforming parking areas for their staff or company vehicles or other situations like this. That you're using, you're creating, what, seven spaces back there?
Yes.
But the entire arrangement does not meet the standard for a parking lot, in terms of the spatial, the sizes and the arrangement. So I guess the concern I have, just from a planning point of view, is that we shouldn't be approving things that are not standard or don't meet the minimum standards. So if you could only park, say, four cars back there, or five cars back there, would that be a problem?
We would probably have to ask our landlord to lease us more space. So Mr. Cipriani owns other parcels of that. We did not want to have to infringe on another tenant.
Yeah.
And that was not our intent whatsoever. So his intent was to give us X amount of spaces that is on the lot so we can conform appropriately.
Right, but those spaces are non-conforming. That's the concern that I have as a planning commissioner. A question to the city, does the city have, I mean, you identify them as non-conforming, is that, in your mind, is that a serious concern?
Well, I think for the proposed use, and as they had previously stated, and we discussed at the last meeting, that the spaces in the rear would be limited to their rental cars. You know, I think they've indicated that they're comfortable with the size. It is tight, no question, but not for passing through. For storage, it would be more of a storage location.
Sort of the inventory is kept.
I'm concerned about us allowing that kind of arrangement and then having to see it every week in a different form, coming from other applicants about cars that are not a public lot. And I don't know if I want to set the precedent here to start accepting non-conforming parking areas.
There are six conditions listed there. Have you read those conditions?
I'm looking at the staff report.
The staff report.
I did read them, but I don't think they're on this. I read them, I don't have them, but I read them.
Number five and six.
Oh, they're waiting.
Are yours?
Lot consolidation is not a problem. It's something we just haven't done over the years, but it's not an issue to do. The pruning is something that we were going to do. It's a great natural barrier between the residential and us, but it doesn't need to be trimmed up, and I think it's noted that some minor prunings.
So Mr. Zeman, how do you want to handle the lot consolidation?
Again, I think the planning commission's judgment has to be whether this is apples to oranges, I think to Mr. Varga and Mr. Cicero's point as well. You know, there are parking areas that are open to the public, and we need to be concerned about adequacy of the parking stalls and the drive aisles. And then there are storage areas. And I think if ultimately the CUP issues, designating that as a storage area for Hertz inventory only, that's something that we can enforce. If it's violated, you know, that could be cause for revocation of the CUP. So I think if the concern is not to set some precedent for parking areas that are open more to the general public, that may be a distinction with a difference if the planning commission so decides in its judgment.
Thank you.
So I did, I think you have.
Yes.
So.
It's haven't changed.
No, yeah, those haven't changed.
So what do you do if you have more than 10 cars?
Well, we have, so I guess that's, we have, if we have 18 spaces, you know, we might have 15 rental cars. We don't need.
Yeah, but one of the conditions is it's going to be limited to 10.
Just 10.
So you have to keep them either at the Jet Center or?
We have more than 10, we would move them.
You'll take them away? Okay. Second question is, what do you do if you bring a car in and it needs to be cleaned before it goes back out?
Yeah, so we would, we wash all the cars off-site. So there's a car wash up the street that we would use.
Okay.
We would, you know, in the past, we have had sort of worded, so we would want to be able to vacuum them out and wipe them down on-site with a shop vac in the back of the building, which is not servicing the unit in terms of, you know, changing oil or washing the car with a hose, but we do generally clean the cars on-site.
Remove trash.
You know, sweep up the peanut that guy dropped on the ground or something. But, you know, we're not talking about full service, you know, lube oil and filter servicing of the car.
So you're talking about general maintenance cleanup?
General, just, you know, just tidy it up a little bit, you know, wipe out the cup holder and things like that.
What you would call detailing?
No.
Not detailing?
No, no. This is not a full detail. This is something that a guy in a shirt and tie does in about five minutes.
So do you have any concerns with regard to that?
No.
No? Okay, any other questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sedoti.
First, as a matter of clarification, I want to apologize. When I went out to the site, I was looking at your site, and I made two visits. I also went to Enterprise's site. I wanted to do a comparison as to the volume the two companies are doing. The 42 cars were on Enterprise's site, but I was counting 20 to 24 cars on your site, all along the back, that little side aisle on the south, and then on the north. According to our report here, it says that the existing Center Street location per the existing CUP, Hertz is limited to eight vehicles to be parked outside. From what I can see, and it's a good thing because you're obviously, you're busy, you're doing good work, but you struggled to maintain eight cars if you're looking at 20 to 24 cars. And you're going from a larger site to a smaller site. So that's a concern. Like Mr. Cicero says, this can get out of hand quickly. And during the course of a busy day, you know, you're not going to have the luxury to go outside and, you know, play referee or quarterback and try to keep everything nice and neat. That's the first concern. The second concern was expressed by Mr. Varga. In the back, in the rear, it doesn't meet parking or parking aisle standards. So we have to consider that if we give on that, the next parking situation that comes, we owe it to that applicant to consider variations or deviations from the code if they ask it. Those are the concerns we're struggling with. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I have a comment, a question on the buffering. Is there sufficient buffering behind the building to accommodate the parking? And the buffering for the residential property owners behind the building?
Yeah, the, well, the buffer, the buffer, yes, there is sufficient buffer currently. It's not being touched, other than we've asked them to clean it up. But there is sufficient buffer.
Okay, so those seven spaces will not encroach on that buffering?
No.
And Mr. Cipriani's agreed to number five and number six, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Do we want to put a stipulation in there about extending the fence? Is that something that can be accommodated with a condition?
Well, just to clarify, I think there was a note about there being a fence in the report, but there is not a fence in the back.
So the fence is?
There's a fence on the adjacent property, but not on this property.
On the auto parts facility. Did you have a comment?
No, just confirming that we are answering their questions correctly. Yes.
Any other comments, commissioners?
Mr. Sedoti, we just wanted to point out that 21 spaces is, that's a two-tenant location, the existing Hertz location, another vehicle servicing facility called Mobile One.
Right, I saw it, I saw it.
I just wanted to make sure that you know it's not 21 Hertz vehicles that are there. You touching the microphone there or something?
Sure.
If there are no other questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion.
With your cellphone?
With my cellphone, ah.
Oh, it's a cellphone.
I don't know, it's just doing it.
That was a good theory, but it didn't work. So I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve with six conditions noted.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Jess, when you're ready.
Mr. Cicero.
No.
Mr. Cook.
No.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
No.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
No.
Mr. Snow.
No. I think it's too tight a situation. Finding a fact, Mr. Zeman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
All the negative votes?
Mr. Cicero.
Really, it's just the parking. I think you were trying to fit too many cars on this small lot, and I worry about the stress times.
Mr. Cook.
Lot's just too small.
Mr. Sedoti.
The lot's just too small, simple as that.
Mr. Varga.
The non-conforming parking and the size of the side drive for two-directional traffic is just too small.
Can I ask one thing?
Let her finish.
Mr. Snow.
Lack of sufficient parking, and also, I think the lot's too small. Now, go ahead.
Yeah, I can, if it's the parking in the back that has a lot of issues, I can make that five. But if it's not wide enough for seven, I'll just make it five.
And where do the excess cars go?
I'll just take them off-site. Like, if we're only going to have 10 cars there, then I don't need 17 spaces. I mean, if I'm only able to, like, if you're only going to, if I'm only going to park 10 rental cars there, I don't need seven spaces for customers.
Mr. Zeman, motion to reconsider, would that be in order?
Yeah, if there's a motion second from those who voted against it, and the motion passes, then you can reconsider and?
Name any number of spaces we want.
Yeah, certainly, one of the conditions can limit the amount of, you know, vehicle inventory that may be there at any given time. That's, if the business can function that way, I guess that's their judgment.
Mr. Varga.
I think we need to do it to a plan. I mean, right now, there's seven spaces back there that don't conform. We're looking for conformance. We'd need to see a plan that conforms. I mean, just to say the numbers are less, I don't know if the outcome is.
Well, if you join without the reconsideration, that raises a procedural issue. If you want to reconsider table and recommend they come back, you know, with some alternate scheme, that's something that you can do.
Let me ask one more question. When do you have to be out of your current facility?
A couple of months ago.
Yeah, we're up against.
We're being pushed, so if we either have to move here or shut down in Mennor.
Is there a motion to reconsider? From the negative voters? Guess not. Done, right?
That's correct, without a motion to reconsider.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks for your time.
Architectural review of a commercial building at 6866 Center Street. Can you bring any samples with you? Burger samples.
These.
So we're back with Scheme A, Scheme B, and Scheme C.
And D.
And D.
Once again, I am Doug Kincaid with Interstate Construction. I'm serving as the construction manager for Thomas Five, the Wendy's franchisee that will own and operate the Wendy's at 6866 Center Street at the new city market development. Since the last planning commission meeting on July 5th, the project architect has worked with the zoning staff on different ideas for the rear of the building. Let me show you Scheme D, which is basically the original scheme submitted on July 5th, except with the rear blade at the 24-foot height, same as the front. Then there was a Scheme B, which basically has both blades at the 24-foot height, but the rear blade is back here at the cooler freezer. Then there was a Scheme A, which was basically the same, very similar to the original plan. The rear blade is at 24 feet. The front blade was changed to have brick underneath it. And then we submitted as well Scheme C, which has the original blade on the front, has a full blade on the back of the building at the 24 feet. B, along with staff, feel that the Scheme C provides the desired effect on the rear building elevation facing the shopping center to meet the design philosophy and guidelines for the city market development. Wendy's agrees with staff recommendations for Scheme C. Additionally, the staff's conditions for the brick and Eiffel finishes are acceptable to Wendy's for finishes as submitted previously on July 5th. We would ask the planning commission's approval of Scheme C and the staff's recommended conditions for the project.
I guess I got a little ahead of myself. We need to take it off the table. Entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. Yes?
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. I won't make you go through the whole pitch again.
Thank you.
Welcome. So any comments from the administration?
Mr. Kincaid did a great job speaking on behalf of the comments of the staff, and we reiterated those in the staff report.
So Scheme C is the recommended?
Yes.
Commissioners, questions for the applicant or the administration?
Mr. Chairman.
Varga.
Since I had the most to say about it the first time, I'll just simply cut to the chase and say that I think they did try a number of different things, and that C is, I think, the best of the schemes, and I think it works to some degree to meet the goals of the development. So I understand that you can't create a new floor plan, though it might have suggested, maybe if you knew at the beginning that we wanted like fronts on both sides. But I think you've done your due diligence to try to solve the problem, so any objections I had in the past, I can accept Scheme C.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion for approval with the one condition, that it's Scheme C.
And you've got the color palettes with you, right? And you'll share those with the administration?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sedoti.
What about the five conditions on the last meeting's report? Six conditions?
I'm getting a shaking of the heads from the administration saying no.
Those are part of the final plan, right?
Right, the only thing that was reserved was architectural review, so.
I'll second.
Mr. Perkovic.
Mr. Cicero.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I appreciate it.
Payphones on the first floor if you've got to call the client.
Okay.
Under new business, miscellaneous review of an office building at 7205 Hopkins. See that applicant standing? Identify yourself for the clerk, please.
My name is Rick Weinrich. I'm with KRC Contractors. I'm representing the architect and the building owner.
So basically, what is going to occur here is you're going from a metal So basically, what is gonna occur here is you're going from a metal roof to a shingle roof.
Correct. Yeah, an architectural shingle, shake style architectural shingle. Both were, you know, the original roof was matte black, the steel roof, and the shingles are charcoal black.
And you wanna do that from a financial standpoint, but also because it makes it look residential, more residential?
Yeah, yeah. After new considerations, you know, the doctor actually likes the look of the shingles better than the steel roof. And it seems to comply more with the residential feel that they're trying to put into those buildings there.
Okay, questions? Commissioners, questions for the applicant or the administration? Any comments?
One question, Chair.
Right ahead, Mr. Cicero.
The roof that you're proposing on the new building, does that match the roof on the existing building?
The existing building will be re-roofed with that same shingle. Yeah, so both buildings will be identical in all of the sidings, shingles, everything.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with one condition.
A second.
Just when you're ready.
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Snow?
Yes. Thanks.
Thank you.
Miscellaneous review of an expansion to a commercial building, Himalayan Salt Therapy at 9132 Tyler Boulevard. Business is good, huh?
We're busy. Well, right now, we're not, but we are pretty busy. I'm Debbie Greenhouse, my husband built. We own the Himalayan Cave, and we've quickly found that customers want more. They want to do yoga inside the cave, and you just can't do yoga inside the cave. We've got salt on the floor, and it's like walking on pebbles. So we wanna expand, we wanna open up. We've got a lot of people that want couples' massages. We don't have the room, we can only accommodate one right now.
Okay, and we received a letter from Dave Novak, president of the condominium, condominium two unit homeowners association, saying he supports your activities. So, just wanted to get that on the record. Comments from the administration?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Comments, questions from the commission? Mr. Sedoti?
I just wanna say congratulations, I'm glad to see the businesses moving forward.
Thank you. Great, people love it, they're coming in early.
Mr. Sedoti's gonna do a little yoga there instead.
Yes.
Very little yoga.
So, any other questions, comments, criticisms? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion with one condition.
Second.
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Snow?
Yes. You're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Minor subdivision of one lot to create two lots in 5595 Dearborn Avenue. Identify yourself for the clerk, please.
Karen Savoto, the owner of the property.
John Springer of Springer Homes and Springer Residential Services.
So, we have, basically, what we have here, I believe, Ms. Mitchell, is two companion pieces, right? Number five and number six?
No, two different things.
But I think they're somewhat compatible, are they not?
No, six is a completely different application.
Well, it's a completely different application, but...
Different location.
It's cardboard.
Other side of the city.
Okay. If you say so, Mr. Zeman.
I've been there.
I'm sorry, go right ahead. Tell us what you wanna do.
What we would like to do, she's hard of hearing. What she would like to do is go ahead and the 5595 Dearborn was originally, the lot in the direct rear was originally separated. But the former owners went ahead and connected that together for a utility service line, the water line. At the time, their water was not available on Dearborn. So they went ahead and connected together and realized it would no longer be buildable from that point on. Karen and I would like to go ahead and separate that back off. And we have spoke with Aqua, and they will go ahead and bring the water service line to the front instead, thereby hoping to make that buildable once more. It does match in size with the other lots under the same ownership with Karen now, where we'll allow to go ahead and construct affordable housing. 1,200 square foot, looks like about 1,200 square foot construction. You have a minimum you would like to see there according to the current regulations.
Any comments from the administration?
No, other than we would concur with the, you know, the size of the lot is consistent with what is already found on the street.
Commissioners, questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Varga?
So, you will no longer get your water service through this lot? You'll have an independent connection for the 5595? You'll have your own water service off of Dearborn?
Correct, sir.
And that line will just be abandoned, I mean, right?
Yes, yes, sir, the tap will be available for future...
For that lot?
Construction, yes.
I understand. What's the lot right above that, that has no address and no identification to it? You don't own that lot?
Yes, she does.
Karen owns...
Oh, I see, okay, right. Is there, is both these lots 50-foot and 50-foot, is that what they are? And those are acceptable-sized lots, right, 50-foot in width? Because I notice there's also double lots on that street, too. All right, that's right, so you own both. So your intention would be to build, in the future, two houses on these lots?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Anything else? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with one condition.
Second.
Just when you're ready.
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Snow?
Yes. Items, you're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Minor subdivision to create one new lot and adjust lot lines in 7350 Maple Street.
Hello. I'm back with something much simpler this time.
We'll be the judge today. So, here we are.
Yeah, so I'm George Davis from Pearl Build Homes. I am under contract with Rick Osborne Jr. to purchase a lot that would be split off. Rick is unavailable to be here this evening, but I'm here to answer any questions you might have. I know there's some, I read the staff report, and I'm aware of some of your concerns.
So now we have two companion items here. We have the lot split, and then we have what is remaining to be a lot line adjustment at the Carpenter's Hall.
Correct.
What, if anything, do you know about what's gonna happen to the parking at the Carpenter's facility when your lot's split off?
Rick's intention is to redevelop that piece, right? So that, I mean, that Carpenter's Hall is fairly dilapidated, you know? I mean, there's a chance, if the purchaser were to wanna keep it, there's park, that he could do an adjustment and have parking in the rear. But the goal here is to use the funds from the sale of the lot to me to fund the redevelopment of the rest of the parcel.
Did you pass the hearing test?
I guess.
So, any comments from the administration?
Mr. Chairman, no, other than the recommendation that was, you know, set forth in the staff report. We just had some concerns with moving forward with the one parcel without having certainty on the, on the buildout of the Carpenter's Union home. We've received some marketing piece materials that Rick is advertising for a second split. And in fact, their engineer did indicate that that is the next step, and that's why we proposed, let's do it all together. Now, the issue is, is the second split is a little bit more complicated because there's B2 zoning involved, and there would need to be a change in zoning, but that would, could be handled through just planning commission and council. So the hope was, is that if you tabled that first one, and then consider them both at the same time to provide, hopefully, a guarantee that they would be split out equally for more usable lots than they exist now.
What kind of timeframe are you on?
We have a customer that wants to purchase the lot. That's, you know, obviously, we would obviously like to buy the lot and build the house on that for that customer.
So, would another meeting or two jeopardize that situation? You understand where we're coming from on it?
I do understand where you're coming from. It's possible, it could, yeah. I mean, we could move, we could try to move him to some other lot. But this customer, it would mess up that customer. That's why I asked Rick if I could come tonight and speak. You know, from my perspective, and future resident of Menter, it would be nice if we could get that lot moving now.
What kind of detriment does that give us? If we do the lot split tonight, not contingent upon the Carpenter's lot and the adjustment?
I guess that's your call. I mean, if you wanted, I don't know, could they make a condition on moving forward with the secondary split within a certain timeframe?
You know, we can't, the issue is, we can't, like, force someone to file an application to do something if they don't follow through and file an application for the rezoning and for what would be subsequent split and lot consolidation.
It's problematic.
It's problematic. Now, other things which I think the property owner would need to be here to, I'd rather hear the property owner agree to a condition is basically that, you know, I think the Carpenter's, you know, Hall has been vacant for many years, it's not being utilized. I suppose one measure of control that we could potentially have is that no reoccupancy permits, you know, will be granted for that space, you know, until such time as those other components of this request were to follow through. That would be one way to move it along and potentially still have some control. But with Mr. Osborne not here, I'm kind of reluctant for the commission to place that type of condition in place, which, you know, could, you know, impact the ability to use that Hall. So, while I could potentially, again, I, so I can throw out solutions like that to potentially move it along, but I'd certainly like to hear Mr. Osborne's concurrence to avoid any further legal complications with what is already something which is fairly complicated. The other item that I have to point out, you know, there's no request for that rezoning, it's a thought. And I don't wanna put the cart before the horse and presuppose what the commission might do on something that's not before it. Now, you all may, you know, have an idea as to what you would recommend, but then ultimately has to go up to city council. And whether or not city council agrees that the rear of that, I'll call it, just call it the blue parcel since it's shaded in blue, you know, city council may not agree that rezoning that to residential is good planning practice. So, that's, I think, where the administration is coming from, that it's kind of hard to separate these components out when they really are one thing. The only other option is, you know, the Carpenter's Hall just stays where it is, and I guess if it's gonna be used for any purpose, they'll have to work out some type of a parking agreement or something. That's the risk ultimately, that I think that we're looking at here, is there would be a building that's vacant. It wouldn't be served by parking unless it would be adjacent, that adjacent parcel, which is shaded in blue. I understand the applicant also owns that, but it's also on the market. And we really don't have the ability to, if someone were to come along and say, oh, I'm gonna offer you X amount of dollars for this parcel as it presently is, I don't want the rear portion of it split off. Really, nothing prevents the owner then from selling it, in which case you've got the Carpenter's Hall on this tiny little parcel with no supporting parking. And it's still, it's still zoned residential at that point, so what do you do with it?
It's our dilemma.
I do have the ability to call over it and see if they would agree to that, no occupancy and...
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
Mr. Chairman? Just so I understand what's going on here, I mean, I'm following the conversation, but some of it's getting past me. You're looking at building a residential development on parcel one. That's the one you're interested in?
Yeah, the light grayish one.
Right, at the top.
Correct.
And then basically, this parcel number three, the dark blue, has been split from that, and we have this yellow piece, this parcel two, that's really non-conforming. I mean, it's, I don't know how you use that parcel.
Well, parcel, the...
I mean, the parcel, the yellow is parcel, ends up being the proposed parcel two, right?
Parcel two, there's the, parcel three, there's no changes being made currently to parcel three in this proposal.
That's not actually part of any of the other parcels right now.
Correct.
So that's just there, all right. But by doing what we're doing, we're isolating this number, this two parcel to become, it's really non-conforming as a business use.
Well, the only thing it does in a positive direction is it, if you can see the Z-line there up top. It now makes that building conforming. You don't have a property line going through it. So, it's moving in a conforming direction. You still have the issue of parking, but as Mr. Zeman noted, it's residentially zoned. So you are gonna have limitations anyway with what you can do with that parcel.
Well, let me just, I'm just trying to figure this out, because it seems like we're backing into a situation that we may not wanna have with some of the things you stated, you know, that this... What happens if we say that you combine parcels one and two, and do whatever you want with the property? Why do we need to keep this parcel two by itself? And just creates a problem for everybody. Why don't you absorb it into parcel one and then make it all residential, or, you know? I'm not trying to solve your problem, I'm trying to understand the problem and trying to eliminate the non-conforming, you know, the little bit that's left over. Is there a reason why you don't want that to be part of your parcel?
That part, that, they wanna retain flexibility because, you know, you have the commercial piece that, you know, may end up needing that part, you know?
Down the road.
Correct, so, you know, you can split off one residential lot.
You own that piece, you don't control that?
I'm only gonna own the residential lot, I'm the person...
I mean, the other thing I'm trying to get at is, would it then not be the ultimate goal to combine parcel two and parcel three? To be a single parcel?
No.
No, that wouldn't be?
No, the goal would be to have the rear of parcel three rezoned residential so that there would be a lot split. Then there would be a consolidation between that split and parcel number two to create another buildable residential lot.
We can share with you, the engineer had given us colored drawing. We can also share, might provide some clarification, and it alludes to the marketing piece I was referring to before. As you can see in the top right, it says Phase Two. He had presented that to us late after the application had been submitted, just for clarification, because when we were reviewing it internally, we were so confused about the lot lines.
So this is not a proposal, but just to understand what this is suggesting is that...
What's in red?
You'd either, yes, the middle piece, you'd either keep the, that's keeping the existing structure there, or is it tearing that down and making another residential?
Well, I think, I think the desire would be to ultimately do more residential, but there's no guarantee of that. I mean, they did indicate, though, that would, they would need to rezone it.
I mean, that I start to understand as being something that everyone can use all the pieces. What's in front of us right now seems to back us into a corner where you end up with a non-conforming piece.
Which is why we're suggesting they... Which is why we're suggesting they be considered together.
Yeah, and the issue with the...
I agree and I see, I understand the proposal.
And the issue with the, with the property owner is they need the funds from the sale of the first lot to me to be able to then proceed with the next phase.
But they still could coincide with the changing of the proposal. I guess what I'm saying is, it doesn't need to happen tonight. It could happen simultaneously and he could still have the money that he needs to do the deal.
The, not the proposal, but the image in front of us does not change the description of the first parcel?
Correct.
It's just the one that you want to proceed with.
Correct.
So if this is phased...
I would be the one purchasing the second parcel too. We just haven't entered into a contract for that.
Okay.
So I had one thought. If you agreed with the recommendation, would the, would the commission consider this? Normally, we do an informal rezoning discussion. Would that need to be had and then the public hearing set or could they go right into, you know, filing for a rezone knowing some of their time constraints and not have to do, because you're having the discussion now? Would that make sense to then not have to worry about having first the informal rezone discussion and then having them come back again for a public hearing? You know what I mean? Is that...
I know exactly what you, I mean, personally, I wouldn't have a problem with doing it that way. I don't know about the rest of the commission, but, I mean, it's a pretty simple task at hand. We're not rezoning 40 acres into something else. It's just making adjustments for residentially zoned property.
Yeah, I just, I don't want to see this process create this as a condition that exists, even though I understand it's the first, it's the first step in multiple steps. But I don't want to approve this and then have it go south and now we're stuck with this for forever because it's, you lose the control over everything.
I mean, I think, I think we would, well, I know we'd be open to the compromise of if we could use this as that first step, that informal step at least so that...
I don't have a problem with that.
I don't think any of us would have necessarily a problem.
This is a lot better to understand and to see where it's going than what's actually in front of us.
We could take an informal poll.
Right. That makes more sense.
This makes more sense and is something I'd be more comfortable with looking to approve than...
Let's do an informal poll amongst the commissioners to see if we could do it that way. Mr. Thielman?
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Snow?
Yes. Done. Kind of motion to table.
I'll make the motion to table.
Second.
Yes.
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
When's Mr., let me ask the question while she's doing this. When is Mr. Osborne back?
Next week.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Snow?
Yes.
Proceed with the informal, would that constitute the informal?
Proceed with the rezone and the second split. You can do both at the same time.
Okay. Okay. Deadlines tomorrow. Great, okay.
Don't go to bed.
Okay, all right.
And that makes more sense because I couldn't figure out what the hell they were going to do with this.
Yeah, I'm going to, you know, Larry spent the most time with this particular applicant, so I'm going to ask Mr. Ratt, oh my gosh, Mr. Ratt, I apologize, Larry.
Thanks. Okay, we've been dealing with giant needle and basically what they're looking at doing around the HVAC units is the standard metal screen walls we've seen in the past. They're going to use a Rancher Red to go around and it's going to be a perforated metal panel. What their goal is, they'll screen any side that's visible to the public from off-site views. And they're showing one, two, three, four, five units that will have the metal panels on either two, three, or there's one back here that's only going to have it on one side because that's the only side that's visible to Center Street. You have the loading dock wall, if you remember, was that two-story basinary structure back there? So this unit would only be visible from one side. The front parapet will screen everything from the front and this side and the sides, that's where it steps down. So they're proposing the screening around then. They're even screening from the backside.
So where are the accent colors that are red on the building?
I think the brick material is a, it closely matches.
So it's a compatible color?
Correct.
It's not the image that's in front of us.
No, it's not this image. That color there.
So let me understand, so at first I thought, oh, this is a good solution. You wrap these units on all four sides and so it doesn't, so even when you're coming off the freeway, it doesn't look bad. But in fact, they're only wrapping them on certain sides, which means when you look at it coming off the freeway, I know the freeway is not the standard that we judge it by, it's Center Street and, but you're going to see some units with like something on one side and nothing on the other side?
Just the visible parts of the units will be screened.
From Center Street, from Tyler?
From Tyler, Center Street and from State Route Two.
Oh, and State Route?
Yeah. This is the State Route Two side right there.
Okay.
So they're going to have...
Okay, well then let me understand this, then maybe I misunderstood. So when you come off the freeway and you see, these will be very visible because you're looking at almost eye level, right?
Right.
That the units will appear to be enclosed with this, with this screening?
That tower there is that tower there. So this will screen from the sides and then they're just going to do the sides of the units at the back. This rear unit will be screened from that side, from the freeway side and the Center Street side.
Just, when you get back to them, just tell them that, you know, I just have a funny feeling about, you know, something that's only screened on one side, you know, that you're really going to sense that it's not, you know, that you're going to see some, I don't know, just make sure that it actually screens the unit from all those sides. Typically, I, you see these things screened on all four sides when they just sit up on a roof like this. And this to me to be screened on one side or...
Yeah, you see them two, three sides sometimes.
Yeah.
There's a couple that I've seen that are four sides, but they have a six-foot gap.
Yeah.
Screening just for access to whatever.
I understand. All right. So they still have this severely stepped parapet wall?
Correct.
Looks kind of, I don't know, okay.
So you feel comfortable with it?
Yes.
Good.
And the whole unit, not, not just the base and then you see the air scuppers or something coming up through the top? The whole unit?
Right. And I'll even make sure it's a condition, the approval.
Because Mr. Varga is going to be all over this, you know that.
I just feel a little funny about it.
Anything else?
No, Mr. Chairman, that's it.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Sedoti?
Mr. Chairman, at our last meeting, we received a verbal and written objection to the Hertz Corporation moving into that 7430 Mentor.
Right.
And Mr. and Mrs. Buckley on Broadmoor Circle made some allegations that they feel that AutoZone is not conforming or complying to the rear buffer. And I, to be responsive to these residents, I asked the administration to go out and check because you can't really see what's going on behind AutoZone from Mentor Avenue
Right.
because it's all fenced off and the other building's too close. So I asked to make sure that there is no problems back there and they were going to report to us under Director's Report at this meeting.
That is correct, Mr. Snow, and I do apologize. We did do an inspection. Our landscape architect went out and did an inspection and he is actually quite satisfied with what is, what is out there in terms of meeting the buffer requirements, the location of the fence. I think the, the concerns that were raised were by a resident that were, they're not behind the fence, they're behind the building and so their view is the building, even though there's some landscaping. And the landscaping that was put in, it's not at mature growth at this point, so I think they need to give it time to do that. But he was satisfied with the landscaping that was put in, that it did meet the approved plan.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I would just ask that the administration communicate that to the residents who raised these allegations. Thank you.
Can do that. Anything else?
Nothing.
Mr. Zeman, anything?
Sure.
You going to introduce yourself so we know who the third person at the table was?
I'm Kayla. I'm an intern for the summer.
So you drew the short straw?
She's been great. She's been a great help.
That's where you started out at here years ago, right?
Yes.
You also?
That was an intern.
Been here long enough. Hey, what about me, huh? Joe, were you an intern?
I've never been an intern, sir.
Okay, anything else? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.